We're going to remain standing and salute the flag.
Well, good afternoon. I understand that you've got a long afternoon and evening ahead of you. So maybe prayers are in order for today.
I agree.
On behalf of Pastor Del Oquist and People's Church, it's an honor to be here. Let's pray. Creator God, we are thankful to be alive. We thank you for today because today is the day that you have made and we are glad to be here. You are an almighty God and everything we see and everything we can't see exists because of you alone. It all comes from you and it all belongs to you and it's all for your glory. So Father God, we acknowledge your presence in this place and in this city and we ask that whatever is accomplished here today would honor you. You are aware of the challenges that we currently are facing as a world, a nation, a state, a county, and a city because you're a sovereign God. You are also aware of the personal challenges, leadership challenges, relationship challenges, and the financial challenges each of us face because you're a personal God and you care. So Lord, would your divine presence help us to see our challenges as opportunities? Would you allow your divine perspective to help us see our delays, detours, and even our disappointments as defining moments? Defining moments where your will was done here on earth in Fresno County as it is in heaven. Because you choose to work through people to accomplish your purpose as God, would you help us to collectively see your will today? Lord, would you afford us the New Testament perspective to fix our eyes not on what is seen but what is unseen? Because what is seen is temporary but what is unseen is eternal. Because you are an eternal God, today we ask that you would guide our path, direct our decisions. Lord, that you would give us the humility to follow your lead, the integrity to do your will, and the courage to do what's right. So God, because you are sovereign and nothing surprises you, and because you are personal, you really do care, we commit this day, this time, today's agenda, and every decision that will be made to and for your glory. And I personally ask this in the name of the one who's changed my life forever, Jesus Christ. Amen. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible.
Thank you, Pastor. Next, we have a ceremonial presentation. We have a couple listed on the agenda that are, have been postponed till next week and we'll talk about that when we talk about today's agenda. But until then, we do have one, and that is a recognition of Peach Avenue as the APWA Central California Chapter Transportation Project of the Year, and that's in Councilman Quintero's district, and he's going to tell us all about this.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it. And good afternoon to all. You know, I want to begin, I'd like to begin with a story that once upon a time, it was about 20 years ago, my hair was a little darker at that time, but I was on the city council. And in those city council offices known as city hall, and particularly in Public Works, somebody got a bright idea. There's always good ideas coming out of our offices, and they said, "Why don't we write a grant and come up with a project for southeast Fresno?" And so the grant writer got busy and started filling out apps, and lo and behold, we got it. And this was to improve Peach Avenue. Well, that was about 20 years ago. So a few years after that happened, that the city was awarded the grant, we had a governor named Gray Davis that said, "Sorry, folks, I need the money back." And he pulled all the projects throughout the state of California, and this one was one of them. So the grant sat on the shelf, and then some time back, a few years ago, monies became available again through the state. And the city then qualified. So some of the folks that were here around that time and worked on that grant, worked on the project, dusted them off and said, "Okay, let's get to work." And so a few faces changed, our hairs got a, on our heads got a little bit lighter. And I wanted to say that it finally culminated this year, it was a great project, and I, and there was an award that was granted just because of that project. And I want to thank the persistence of our Public Works Department. I want to call Scott Moser up here and tell you congratulations. The folks, some of the folks that I'd like to mention as Scott comes up here, and I'd like you to stand up, is Mike Hawley, Matt Bowler, Steve Sun, Sarah, you wrote the grant? Somebody did. Therese. And any of the folks that are in Public Works that are here today, please stand up because we really owe you a debt of thanks. I mean, it's a great job that you did. And Scott was reminding me a little bit earlier that it was a $10 million grant, and I really want to thank you for a beautiful project that's become a source of community pride in our area, and I still get compliments on it, the, from folks that go to the grocery store or the hardware store, and it's just a beautiful job and you've done a great job. And it was supposed to go all the way to Butler Avenue, which it did, but it also helped that new projects came in, like Sunnyside High School, Winko, and they helped put money into that, that pot. And so Scott, for the city award part of it, it was a $10 million grant, round figures, and the award was given by the American Public Works Association, the, for the Central California Chapter. And it was awarded the 2014 Award of Merit. And I want to really congratulate you and the Public Works Department, and I know you want to add some more names to it and talk a little bit about the project and the great job. Thank you all very, very much, and I, we owe you a round of applause.
All right. Well, thank, thank you, Councilmember Quintero, and I just want to first say that it, of course, it wouldn't be possible, this was a project that had, of course, multiple votes that came before the city council. So to our elected officials who made that possible, from an overall big picture of funding, Councilmember Quintero mentioned the state dollars that went away under Governor Gray Davis, and just want to recognize that after that occurred, we had a new Measure C extension in the works, and it was recognized as a big priority for the city and the county. And at the time, our city manager, Bruce Rudd, was on that steering committee and was able to say, along with all the other priorities out there, that Peach Avenue needed to be on that list. So we were able to deliver that with a combination of Measure C money, this was one of the big regional projects. We were able to pick up some state bond proceeds that matched dollar for dollar with Measure C. But again, you saw the group standing up, I want to just, you know, again, mention some different names from, on our project management side, especially Mike Hawley. Big credit goes to him as the PM on the job. With the on-again, off-again of the state money, then ultimately, Mike was asked to pick this up, all the loose, loose pieces of it and get this done. Big kudos also to our realis, to our real estate division. We're able to acquire 47 properties, and out of those, only one had a condemnation action, and that one settled without going to court. So 47 properties, no court actions, both real estate and our city attorney's office. From Development Department, again, we had historic palm trees, historic olive trees. So credit to Karana Hattersley-Dreighton and Sofia Pagalatos for their help processing that, and again, to our Purchasing Division, you know, Construction Management Division, huge, huge effort to make this one happen. So it was a thrill. Again, Sarah Palmera, grant writer, was able to put, tell that story, put it together. APWA recognized that, and we were very honored to receive that as the Transportation Project of the Year on the Central Valley. So again, many thanks to everybody who made this happen.
Congratulations again, and I know that as far as the names that I mentioned are people that I constantly kept calling up for updates, and nowadays, in, back 20 years ago, I did represent the entire area in that southeast part. So Councilman Olivier, I know, of course, is representing over along Belmont Avenue, and I'm sure he's gotten a lot of good kudos. And city manager, did you want to mention anything about the project? Because I know that you were somewhat involved.
Well, yes. I mean, this was one of those projects that when, as Scott mentioned, Measure C was being renewed, we were at the table and we were advocating for projects, and of course, whenever you're dealing with a city, county, countywide tax, everyone has a little bit of something they want to get done. So there was a lot of competition for these dollars, but at the end of the day, I am, I am happy to say that we prevailed with this project, the Hernan Avenue widening, Veterans Boulevard. There is a lot of great things that have come out of the extension of Measure C that we all have, the voters to thank for approving at such a wide, wide margin. So good work to staff because even though you can go out and get the money, you still got to deliver the project, and you guys have done an excellent job in doing that. So thank you as well on behalf of the mayor. And I will say, credit also is due to Mayor Autry, who was also a strong advocate during that time for this project, as well as the other city of Fresno projects.
And now, once again, I really want to reiterate how important it was and how thankful we are that our, our staff, I mean, I know you daily go around taking care of your business in a very quiet way, and, and I know we don't recognize you enough, but it's just a huge thank you, and like I said, it's, it's a big source of, of our community pride, and I want to thank you as well, Scott. So, once again, thank you. It's looking beautiful, the shrubs are growing real nice, houses are getting improved along that little corridor, and it's just revitalized the entire area. So congratulations once again, Award of Merit 2014.
APWA.
Congratulations. Thank you.
All right. Now we're on to the approval of minutes from a previous meeting, and that meeting was the December 4, 2014 meeting. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to those minutes?
There are no changes.
So do I have a motion to, for the approval of those minutes? Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Now we're on to council member reports and comments. Are there any council members that would like to? Councilman Baines.
I don't necessarily have anything I want to report. I just wanted to say hello to my friend, Joseph Oldemar, and just acknowledge him in the audience. He is our former sustainability manager, and he's gone on to bigger and better things with the state, but I just wanted to say hello. He did an awesome job when he was here with us at the city. And listen, you changed my life in a number of ways, Joseph, and made me look at sustainability in a whole different way. So glad to have, glad to have you back. I think I can guess what item you're here for today, so just wanted to say hello.
Councilman Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to have, have the opportunity to say early Merry Christmas to all of our, our staff, the city family, and also to many of the organizations, nonprofits, and businesses that support a lot of the endeavors that we have in southeast Fresno, our carnival, our toy drives that we have, and in particular, the Fresno Cowal Community Outreach Services. For 18 years, they, we've worked with them in southeast in collecting toys for children just for southeast, and the couple that works on that, Philip and Pat Rivera, are out there for a week and a half, and then at the end of that time, they go ahead and wrap the toys and distribute them to the children in southeast Fresno. And also, I wanted to thank Chris Sorensen's Art Studio, they own a business on Kings Canyon, and Saturday, they had a pancakes-for-coats drive, and they gave all the coats that were donated, brand-new coats, to Greenberg Elementary School, which is over there in southeast Fresno, and also the 7-Eleven store at Belmont and Clovis Avenue. Annually, they donate 300 coats to the elementary schools in southeast Fresno, and they do a great job. So we have a lot of those, those quiet Christmas angels that are helping us out, and I just want to say thank you to them for the support they've given us, and, and also to, to our city employees too, and making the city, keeping it up and being caretakers. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Screen is clear. I was just going to ask our city manager, early in the year, at the beginning of the year, we took a vote about the Fulton Mall, and then we were going to, there was a study that was going to be done to show full build-out for the price projected to open the street. When can we expect an update on that issue, on that item?
I think we're at 90% design, so I would anticipate sometime in early part of January, middle of January.
So we're pretty much right on target then, because we talked it would take about a year
Right.
After our vote to bring it back. So we're right on target with that then?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Councilman Quintero.
Forgot something. City manager, what happened to the Christmas tree out front?
For a number of years, for, this was, it was a city-sponsored event, and then over the last four to five years, it became completely a voluntary program.
Volunteers.
And like a lot of volunteer programs, the, the amount of time and energy to harvest the tree, bring the tree, decorate the tree, it takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
And this is just one of those years where the team just didn't have enough time in their personal life to commit to doing the tree and doing the tree right, and they, they just didn't feel they could do the community justice and make that commitment this year. So perhaps next year.
I know in past years, the administration has thanked the volunteers for that, and I think some of them were city employees or retired city employees.
A combination of both.
Combination, so. And the tree was donated from the mountains or something?
It was donated by Southern California Edison, and then we would go up and harvest the tree, you know, with our, with Corcoran, to say a Corcoran.
It was a big coordinating effort then.
It is a major undertaking.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well, we'll keep him in our thoughts and as a spiritual Christmas tree. Thank you.
All right. Screen is clear. Now we're on to the approval of today's agenda. Madam Clerk, has there been any changes to today's agenda?
There's only one change, and that is under ceremonial presentations. First of all, item ID 14671 is a duplicate of ID 14662, and the recipient of that presentation was not able to make it today, so that's going to be continued to 121814.
So we'll have that for next week then?
Yes.
And then, is that it for the changes on today's agenda?
That's it.
Then do I have a motion to approve today's agenda? And a second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Now on to today's consent calendar. We are going to vote on the consent calendar in its entirety unless a council member removes an item. Before we do that, I'm going to ask if any member of the public would like to address any of the items on today's consent calendar. Right on, Barbara.
Thank you very much for telling me that we was going to have a city council meeting here today, and we wasn't just going over to the planning commission meeting. No one would have known it if it were, I wouldn't have known it if it wasn't for the President of Beale. Now, on this here consent calendar, it's ridiculous to give all this money. I admire them doing the work, and our district too, and I never seen anybody come over there with my attention of any projects or going to any of Mr. Baines' meetings to concern any issue unless there's one general plan meeting that they want to construct themselves, and he wasn't even there. So I don't think it's fair for we to approve all these things for District 3 when they don't have adequate input, and it's against the law for them to make a decision without the public knowing about it in a closed set, in a backdoor deal, because everything's done, supposed to be done in the public. So this is a criminal act right here, and I'm going to stop this pretty soon. You watch, God's going to help me on this, and he helped me on every damn thing. But it's not fair for all this money to be going to District 3 when we don't see anything. And Mr. Paul Caparillo, you're not rolling right now, I'm speaking up here, okay? And when I give you my divine attention, I also like to say for my seven people up, my people up here, councilperson, because we one body up here. And I'd like for you to hear, and by you being an attorney, you should already know how important things are. But I understand since you work for out there and that, what you call this doggone district out there, Fresno State, I know what time it is, can't fool me or nothing. But what I want to say is, we got a whole bunch of things up here for Measure C money to be going to. I'd rather see some of that Measure C come to buses or something other than Met Museum, some kind of project for his, what they want, Gray Fields, and maybe somebody else's name, I'm looking at this paper right here, is not there. They getting everything. Federal government is broke. Two days left of money. Y'all, everybody been broken. And that shows that the Congress is the United States of America's government, the federal government is just one branch. They're not worth, you can see they almost broke it, but one thud's bell, amount of people, they wouldn't be there, all these projects, everybody swarming with. They ought to be shaming themselves. And I don't see all these projects. Where the money going? Where's the money going for all these projects and everything that we giving all these many years? I used to say, "Where's the money? Where's the project?" I don't see none. So who's that, that red ass up there that's collecting all of our money that's supposed to be going to our people that's here in, in this city, which you guys represent? We don't see the money. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Any other members of the public like to address any of the items on today's consent calendar? All right then, we'll come back up to the DICE Councilman Brand.
I'd like to pull item 1G. Or 14-658.
Okay. Hey, you're learning that Granicus talk. All right, we like that. All right then, any other items then, council members? All right then, with the exception of item 1G, which we'll pull for contested, let's vote on the rest of the items. Do I have a motion to? Have a motion to vote? And a second? All right. Let's take a vote. All in favor of today's consent calendar? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Those items are passed. Now we're on to contested consent, which is item 1G. Councilman Brand pulled this item. It's authorizing the city manager or designee to execute a contract with CBRE to provide real estate management services. Councilman Brand.
Just wanted to point out, this is a follow-up to the Asset Management Act that was actually passed several months ago, which I believe will have a major beneficial effect on the city of Fresno by essentially getting a private sector broker to manage the city's assets and identify surplus properties, value-added opportunities, et cetera. And I think CBRE is a well-qualified firm. There's only a handful of firms that actually do this, so I think, I'm anxious to get going. And one of the first things they'll be doing will be a, basically about a 90-day thorough evaluation of all the city assets and come back with a plan to the council sometime, I'm assuming about February, March next year. So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve this item.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion also passes unanimously. Now we are on to general admin section of our agenda. Item 2A is our first item. Actions pertaining to the recycled water distribution system, southwest quadrant, and state revolving fund loan documents. That's from our Department of Public Utilities.
Good afternoon, Council. Steve Hogg, Department of Public Utilities. So we're here this afternoon to ask you to take three actions. First is to adopt the resolution to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to sign a financing application for financing agreement with the State Water Resources Control Board, adopt a resolution to finance the cost of improvements, and third, adopt a resolution to pledge revenues and funds to satisfy repayment obligations of the financing agreement. So this is, what we're looking to do here is apply for a state revolving fund loan. We've been in front of the, you before, the council here, to talk about the importance of including recycled water as a portion of our water portfolio, as a very reliable drought-resistant water supply. To that end, we, we brought forward a recycled water master plan that the council adopted and have begun to move forward with implementing that program. One of the components of that program is to build a distribution system to bring the treated water out into the community for use for various applications. We are in the process to design of that first phase of that distribution system. That project was originally intended to be funded, the distribution system projects were originally intended to be funded by a combination of sewer enterprise reserves, and ultimately, in a few years out, probably would have to do some bond financing. As a result of the drought conditions that we've seen here in the state of California, the governor has made about $800 million of state revolving fund loans, very low interest at 1%, available for recycled water projects. So what we're asking for with these actions today is the opportunity to actually apply for a loan against those, some of those low-interest 1% financing, which would allow us to, to reduce future bond requirements to complete the distribution system, and then maintain some additional money in our reserves that we'll be able to use for other capital projects as well. So with that, if any questions, I'll be available to answer.
Thanks, Steve. We'll go out to the public and then come back up to council. So are there any members of the public that would like to address this item?
Thank you.
You didn't turn in cards today, Barbara.
You know what? I'm so, really, I am, because I work so hard out there moving all that trash, I got a big IWS truck out there, being out there, I've been working. I'm a working person. I just can't sit here and try to look pretty and stuff and got a job to do.
I understand.
I gets the job done, and I spend my own money
Yes, you do.
Instead of paying them, I do it myself. I need, have my own set of food and clothes, not noodles no more. But whoever making these agendas, you ought to fire them. Because you can't even hardly understand, they ought to go back, this is you, Ms. Baines, you ought to go back to the old way of doing the agendas, they got them all over the paper, and you don't know what's going on because they're trying to throw you off, and I know you didn't do it because it was stamped by a clock. Now you, they did it, I already know it. So, okay, on this item here, the solid waste, it said west side, so is that in District 3? Where's this project at?
Yeah. Council District 3, the one we're talking about now?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Council District 3.
Well, I didn't notice that 3 sitting up there. My concern is, that recycled sewage water, because Mark McAtchar was up here then, they said, "Tell Barbara what we're drinking in that bottle." He said recycled nation water, because in those days, it was black boo-boos stepped water around that water and it was smelling real bad. Then all of a sudden, we gave millions of dollars to uphold that thing, it was leaking, ground contamination, a whole bunch of stuff, to all that farm, even Western Elementary, below the West Fresno School District. So they, they couldn't do it. They need something to be done with that thing. That thing used to smell so bad out there, it don't even make sense, and they meant us to park out there. They ought to be, Mr. Baines ought to be shaming himself. The same judgment he give us, God gonna give him to his, because he don't know he doing the others as they do to you. And don't think God's not watching. Kids don't have nowhere to go, no parks out there. Now that's what they talking about, you being interrupted by this guy, he been on Cynthia Sterling Committee, and he been on everybody else's committee around here. Mr. Badfield and over here, he's the president, he don't give nobody, he's talking to the city attorney. You should have talked to them before you even got on the board to know what's going on. So what, this is what I want the people to see. This is what we're paying our money for. And you guys will make it very good, because God, in the name of Jesus, whatever decision these people give to the day, give them back to them, and God answer my prayers. And on this, the water, the recycled sewage water, the people on that water board need to come down here, investigate that thing, if it's the one on Jensen, because they got a nuclear plant out there, and I don't never hear nobody talking about that nuclear plant we got built out there. So he builds a lot of stuff, and nobody know what going on, Mr. Butler. I think you said once, you might want to one of these in your district, volunteer and take that sucker over there to your district. We got enough. Our kids are tired. No place to go, they all think they accuse us No place to go, they all think they accuse us gangs and drugs and prospect, nothing for them to do, schools, nothing. Put a big school in your backyard, you don't know what goes on, want to take your land, you don't know what goes on. But one of your guys told me, we need to get the FBI in here. So when I heard a plumber guy that used to be on your council tell me that, I know, he know what he talking about.
All right. Any other members of the public like to address this item? All right, we'll come back up to council. Councilman Baines, this is about District 3. So we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have a second, Councilman Jean? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thanks, Steve. And then, now, general admin, Item 2B, that's ID 14-576. Actions pertaining to the energy efficiency programs under the Local Government Partnership Program for 2015. And that is our DARM department.
Good afternoon, Council President and councilmembers. My name is Jose Gonzalez. I am the Energy Program Administrator for the Sustainable Division of the Development and Resource Management Department. I'm very excited to present council agenda item 14-576 and share with you some information regarding our current programs, initiatives, and goals. Council Agenda Item 14-576 is for the 2015 extension of our Local Government Partnership Program for the Central Valley Energy Tune-Up Program, also known as the Fresno Home Energy Tune-Up Program. Which one? Today, the request that we are putting for the City Council is to authorize the Director of Development and Resource Management Department to extend the current master service agreement between PG&E and the city of Fresno until...
Jose, can you get a little bit closer to that microphone?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
To extend the contract till December 31, 2015, and receive 2.847 million in funding from the California Public Utilities Commission for energy efficiency programs, and to amend the current consulting services contract with Consul to December 31, 2015, and provide funding to the extended year of 2.2 million for the Fresno Home Energy Tune-Up Program. Little bit of regulatory background, the California Public Utilities Commission is interested in moving away from the current two- and three-year cycle programs and are looking at going to a 10-year energy efficiency portfolios, starting in 2016. Their rationale for this is to reduce or mitigate the losses, the inefficiencies of starting and stopping programs with the current two- and three-year cycles. Rulemaking 13-11005 was divided into three phases. Phase 1 was expedited to provide budgets, goals, and review parameters for the investor-owned utilities, and is to be completed before 2015. It was actually approved on October 16, 2014. So along with the goals and budgets, it also mandates that the utility companies will utilize 2015 as the third year of a three-year energy efficiency portfolio, which means that 2013, 2014, and 2015 will be evaluated. Once Phase 2 are complete, that will conclude the rulemaking 13-11005, and then that will set the groundwork for the 10-year rolling portfolio, starting in 2016 and up through 2025. Little bit of metrics information on our current program. In 2014, up until September this year, we saw a 73% increase in quantity of assessments that were done. This is only in the city of Fresno. It is also associated with a 46% reduction in cost per assessment. So we're down to 430 per assessment, where we started at 792. The residential overall shows that for our current program cycle, we have continuously been improving on our cost-effectiveness on a monthly basis. On our commercial assessments, we saw a 95% increase in quantity of assessments, again, this is for the city of Fresno, in 2014 as compared to 2013, and an associated 51% reduction in cost for those assessments in 2014. Again, the overall for our program shows an increase in cost efficiency. We also collaborate with other organizations to try to improve our program value. We work with the Water Division for the city of Fresno, and for residents participating in our program, we provide the water conservation packets. We also provide optimization for HVAC systems at no cost to the homeowner if they elect to have that. We also implemented an HVAC-to-code pilot program in September of this year to incentivize the homeowner and contractors to follow the proper permitting procedures for the safety of all. We also teamed up with the Center for Irrigation Technology Fresno State and provided water-energy nexus training for multiple municipal locations, governments, and we also provided Title 24 update training with our Building Energy Code Training. We are currently working on an energy advisor pilot. This will be a post-residential assessment support. The energy advisor will communicate with the homeowner and provide them information on understanding the report, on potential financing options available to them, on preparing strategies on how to accomplish those upgrades. We're also working with the Air Pollution Control District, and we're trying to collaborate with them in handing out some of their information on potential incentives or rebates for residents for internal controls, temperatures, and, you know, heating for their homes. We're also currently working with the Housing Division of DARM to try to coordinate with their housing programs to, again, improve our program value. We're working with the Great Valley Center. They put on a computer literacy program, and we will be joining their program and on their course, provide the participants an opportunity to have a web-based assessment provided to them as their last class. We're also working with the Local Government Commission regarding the Civic Spark Internship Program. We're interested in utilizing this service to build capacity in our program and continue its cost-effectiveness. Based on follow-up phone calls with the residential and commercial sectors that have gone through our, participated in our program, we've approximated the amount of energy savings based on the conversions that we've been informed of. The energy savings are reflected in these three pictures, equivalents, meaning that the amount of energy saved is equivalent to 2,535 cars taken off the road, equivalent to 9,875 acres planted, and equivalent to 1,102 homes powered. To recap, our request today to the City Council is that they authorize the Director of Development and Resource Management Department to extend the master service agreement between the city of Fresno and Pacific Gas and Electric Company until December 31, 2015, and receive 2.847 million in funding from the California Public Utilities Commission for energy efficiency programs, and to amend the current consulting services contract with Consul to December 31, 2015, and provide funding for the extended year of 2.2 million for the Fresno Home Energy Tune-Up Program. Thank you very much. I'm available for questions, if you have any.
Right on. Thank you, Jose. Very thorough analysis, too. We appreciate that. So we're going to go to the public first. If any members of the public would like to address this item, now is your opportunity.
See anybody rushing up there?
I don't, but I have to say it like that, Barbara.
I know you guys enjoy the ask, nobody run up here. Well, only thing I didn't see about this picture, they was getting rid of the old cars, and then they offered things to those new houses, but about offering things to the older houses, or the middle-class houses, or subdivision houses, but them swimming pools I'm seeing don't look like anything we have on our side of town. I'm not objecting to the project, but we have to spread this money around. And this, people we sent disauthorizing this, Department of, Department Development and Resource Development, that's not the city of Fresno. It's supposed to be Bruce over here authorizing this stuff to be going on, working for the city of Fresno. Bruce, you giving them all of our departments, you sitting back, driving your Corvette while they up there taking every damn thing we got around here. That's our money. Why them people up here bringing this project? That's why Mark left off around here, because he couldn't worship two masters, work for them department and work for the city of Fresno at the same time. It's not right. Either we gotta do something about these people, getting all this money, $2 million, they all in all the departments, probably you two, and then, because I seen that paper, you didn't want nobody to see, that's why I talked about it, which y'all had in closed session. But we have to have some structure around here, because we gonna start giving away when the federal government, two days, they gonna be broke, and there's no more money. So like the bullet train, everything, we going to federal government, federal government, like we a prostitute or something, they give us everything? No. We them broken. Everything's broke around here, if Congress don't give them some money. And then these people, PG&E, they're nice folks and stuff, but we bailed them out a long time ago, when they went bankrupt, and also San Diego. So when we make something like this here, I agree with it, but include the poor people, the middle class, instead of the people that he's talking about, he gotta give a whole picture. That's all I want to say about it, but this is the big picture. From the look on you guys' face, you didn't even know anything about it and what it meant, none of this stuff. He sitting up here reading everything. Miss, y'all ought to cut this mess out.
Thanks, Barbara. Any other members of the public like to address this item? All right then, back up at council. Councilman Baines.
Thanks, Council President. Jose? So first, I want to, I want to thank you for a great, a great report. I am a big fan of this program, as you probably already know. As I talked, Joseph taught me everything I needed to know about this some years back, so I think this, you're doing a fantastic job. And, you know, I wanted to ask a couple of questions, just kind of clarifying. You said that the cost, that you've been able to significantly reduce the cost of the survey over the last year?
Yes, the average cost of the assessments has decreased.
Yeah, so I think I scribbled it down, you said it used to be $730?
Initially started, that was the average over the 2013 year.
Right.
Compared to the average over the 2014, up to September of this year.
And now it's down like 400 and something?
430.
430. What do you attribute such the reduction in our cost to that?
The main difference is our approach. We rely more on direct outreach versus media like TV, so there's a lot of savings there. Also, increasing the quantity of assessments just reduces the overhead that goes along with it.
Right, right. Oh, that's outstanding. Well, I just wanted to give you kudos. I think that's great, anytime you can obviously make the program dollars go further, because I mean, that's what you're doing, obviously, with the ability to reduce the cost like you have, you can do more assessments.
Exactly.
With the money that, the money that you were given. So have you, do you guys do any targeted outreach in, say, underserved communities and really?
We have done some in our program, yes, for underserved communities. Right now, we, our method of outreach initially, when it started, was really targeted towards the areas where there was a lot of energy use. With our direct outreach, we pretty much just allow anybody to come in, so.
Okay.
You know, we don't, we don't determine a specific social or a specific economic.
Right, right, right. So what I'll probably, that's understandable. So obviously, I'm in support of that, and in the, you know, the next couple of weeks, maybe we can spend some time and we can talk about maybe, you know, being able to cast that net a little bit wider in.
Sure.
In some of our underserved communities and make, because it's a great benefit when they come in and do an assessment, and obviously, you guys are leaving folks with tremendous strategies on.
Right.
Energy efficiency, which result in direct, you know, direct cost savings to them on their energy bill, so, you know, we're obviously for that. So thank you, Jose. Fantastic presentation, and I'll just kind of call you down one of these days, and we can talk a little bit about how we, like I said, cast that net further. And with that, Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we approve our staff's recommendation.
All right, great. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? By Councilman Jean, and the screen is clear. Let's vote. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thanks a lot, Jose. Good job. The next item on general admin is 2D, that's ID 14-638. Actions pertaining to sewer mains in Loma Linda Avenue and Sequoia Drive, and that's in District 2, the best district in Fresno. And that is from our Department of Public Utilities as well.
Did you skip one?
Did I skip one?
I think so.
Oh, I skipped one. Well, let's go to this one now.
It doesn't matter.
I was preferring District 2.
That's what District 2 does. They just, they bully themselves, they skip, they skip past other folks.
He just trying to get me in trouble with my boss.
Yep.
Good morning, councilmembers and Council President. I'm Kevin Norgar of the Department of Public Utilities, Wastewater Management Division. We are here today to ask approval of three items as they pertain to the Loma Linda Sewer Infill Project. The first action is to adopt two SEQA findings. One is categorical exemption, the second is a statutory exemption. The second is to award the construction contract in the amount of $375,840 to Bill Nelson, GEC, Inc. of Fresno, California. And finally, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities or his designee to sign the contract for the city, and I'll be available for questions.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this item?
Not even. I see you guys up there looking sort of with nobody to talk back to you. How y'all sitting up here voting, don't have the public? That's not fair. But on this one here, we did so much work downtown in this area here, and then when they got affirmative action, I don't see people of color on any of these projects out here, and I'd like to see more people of color on these projects spending all this money. Now, all this whole city need new pipelines, everything need new pipelines, but you too busy going overseas over there, like she die over there in Syria, somewhere out there running around, and everybody else, and Baines, he over there with links together with everybody else, instead of coming to people over in his district, because I'm not linked to anything but God, and then everybody else is taking care of their district, and our district over here, we not even taking care of anything over there in pipes and nothing like that, plumbing and whatever else we got out there, just today, I gotta notice out there. Don't make sense. But when we have somebody that on a mission, that don't care anything about their district, I think they should have stayed at home and let somebody else have their position, that could have led it better than the last two or three parties that we had up there, that didn't do anything for District 3. So this man here, at least he is trying to do something for our length of California Environment Quality Act control. We should approve it. The main sewer people, we need to prove anything to do with them. Only thing I see out there in our district is them police riding up and down the street about five of them at a time at 5:00 o'clock and bringing all that pollution, and I can't hardly see out of my eyes up here, because we have a councilperson that don't care anything about his district, and that's what I'm saying. We need help over there, and we're not getting any help over there. That's why I think maybe we need an operation rezone in here like they did the rest of them when the people came out here, then investigated and took a lot of folks to jail out this place and put the handcuffs on them, and let me see what this District 3 is all about, because I haven't been to a meeting, meeting but one or two, about other issues, and the report I get is about other issues, nothing about our district, and this man is up here with his project showing what he need for this project, and I said, "Let's approve it," because at least he is doing something for some people. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other members of the public like to address this item? Then back up to council, and since it is in District 2, I'm going to recommend that we approve staff's recommendation, so I make a motion in that direction. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion passes 7-0. What's that?
When you say, "Any opposed," how come they always looks over at me?
That's a good question. I've wondered that myself. All right. Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate that. All right, the one that I skipped is Item 2C. All right, the one that I skipped is Item 2C, that's ID 14-636, adopt the 2014 revision of the City of Fresno Sewer System Management Program, or Plan, and that's with Steve as well.
Bring that up for me? Thanks. Thanks. Thank you. Stephen Hogg, Department of Public Utilities. So we're, we're look, actually, we're looking for here today is asking the council to adopt the 2014 revision to our sewer system management plan. I've got just a little short presentation here, and look to, to opportunity. So, this really is to talk about how we operate, maintain our sewer collection system infrastructure. We've got a little over six, 1,500 miles of gravity sewers, a little over 12 miles of force mains, uh, over 23,000 manholes, 55 junction structures, and 15 lift stations. So we have a significant amount of infrastructure buried under our streets in our sewer collection system. Back in 2006, the State Water Resources Control Board adopted a general order that required all sewer collection systems within the state to fall under this general order, and be permitted under the order. And so, basically, the, the purpose of, of this order was to reduce the number of sanitary sewer overflows. During that time period, particularly in the Bay Area, they were seeing significant sewer overflows, it was a number of agencies that were having issues with properly managing their system, and so the state board wanted to get that under control. One of the main elements of that program was to, to, for each agency to develop a sewer system management plan. There was a number of other requirements to, to ensure that each agency was properly operating, maintaining their system, but the one we don't wanna talk about today was the development of the sewer system management plan. So, what is a sanitary sewer overflow? Well. Let's see. So it's basically any treated, or partially treated wastewater that overflows, and has the potential of entering the waters of, of the US, or creating a public safety or health, public safety or health or nuisance. So, what are some of the common causes? Really, it's generally there are, there are obstructions, whether it's grease, or roots, or failed pipelines, lack of sufficient capacity, lack of proper maintenance, and those are the kind of things that the state was looking to address with the development of this sewer system management plan. So, as that, part of that requirement, we did our first sewer system management plan in 2009, was adopted by council. There's a requirement that that plan be revised every five years, that's why we're, we're back here today. And let's just talk a little bit about the revisions, couple of the highlights, really, it's a lot of, a lot of minor stuff, paperwork things, updating, updating the, the representatives, updating our standard operating procedures in our O N M manual, updating our, our collect, our master plan for our collection system, and our capital improvement program. We're required to include performance measures in that plan, and so we're updating those performance measures, and we're also required to maintain the public information program, and so basically providing an update to that program. Let's just talk a little bit about some of the things that we were doing to implement the goals of the program. So there's, we have 34 very dedicated staff, then sewer system collection, collection system maintenance work group, with a variety of specially equipped, specialized vehicles that are available, and they respond, and do the maintenance 24 hours a day. So some of the things we've implemented as part of this is, we've implemented a lot of new technology. We've now have, in each of those specialized vehicles, we have, uh, computer access, ruggedized laptops in each of those vehicles, with broadband access, that allows staff to, in the field, access any of our GIS mapping systems, our asset management system, our work order management system, can open and close, receive work orders in the field, be able to access any of the mapping and infrastructure information they need, previous assessments and that sort of thing. So it's, adds a lot of efficiency to have that, that communications ability. We, we've added a number of specialized high-tech tools. This is a, an example of, of one of the things we're doing with state-of-the-art cameras and system evaluation software. So these cameras give us the opportunity to go through the system and evaluate, actually evaluate system and infrastructure condition, and a lot, this information is then assessed using state-of-the-art software, and allows us to build our, our capital improvement program related to the collection system. I wanna give, recognize, this is a really innovative process, I wanna recognize, we've got two of our, our two collection system maintenance supervisors here in the audience, Aaron Davis and Art Alvarez back here. I'd like to recognize them, this is a concept that they actually came up with, and got together with our technical staff and developed, using, uh, the vehicle on each end of a cleaning job will have a, a computer and computer monitor, and it allows them to, we are actually using a, a digital cameras, video cameras that are Wi-Fi enabled, and we're actually able to communicate via Wi-Fi with the camera in the pipe to evaluate the, the cleaning job while it's going on, and historically, it was done blind, you'd run the equipment through there, you'd hope you got it clean, you hoped you got the right spot. Using this Wi-Fi-enabled cameras, that they came up with this system, we're actually able to actually watch the cleaning operation and process, and so it's a, a very valuable tool, and something that, that staff actually came up with in-house. We've increased the number of spot repairs we're doing in town, we've got the construction crew that out, out repairing of a number of smaller issues in pipelines, prevent, prevent leakages and further damage to the system. We continue to try to do a good job with our public outreach. One of the big things that we're, we're really looking out, and, and trying to educate the public on these days is flushables, you've got all the products out there that people call flushable, whether they're wipes or whatever, just because you can flush it down the toilet, doesn't mean you should, because they really don't, don't react well. Here's a good example of, of how these programs have actually improved the system. What you'll see there is a graphical representation of the city limits. Each of those little squares on there represents what we call a plat, it's a kind of a map area. The one on the left represents sewer sanitary overflows as related to grease problems that we were having in the system. Blue being the most severe, red least lesser, and down to green, and then the ones, the beige, where we didn't have any sewer, sanitary sewer overflows as a result of grease. You could see the effectiveness of our cleaning, preventive maintenance programs, our public outreach, the, the, the one on the right is these last five years, so you could see a significant reduction. Another one of our performance measures is a comparison to what we're seeing with the state average with sewer overflows. The, the state recognizes that any agency that can keep under one, what they call category one, which are the more severe, the bigger ones, category one, less than one, excuse me, less than one per a hundred, well, less than one per mi, 100 miles of collection system, sorry, get that out, there is doing really well, and you can see, on our category ones, we're down at .26, and so where the state average is still up at almost four. And so, our, our staff is doing a great job keeping the system functioning. In fact, in the, the months of April, June, July, September, November of this year, we had zero sanitary sewer overflows. The other thing that we're, we're doing, and I wanna give Kevin Norgard here credit, and his staff credit for, we've, we've recently developed an in-house, a very sophisticated sewer system model. It allows us to evaluate the sewer system capacity. Anytime that we wanna bring a, a, a new user on, it's very simple to plug in the information for that user, what their flows will be, it will calculate the projected flows all the way down from that particular user, down the system to the treatment plant, and allows to evaluate the capacity. And so it's a very, very good tool. It also allows us, allowed us to develop and update our collection system master plan, which we now have, wrapping up right now, is an updated, which will be used for our, our five-year capital improvement program for, for the sewer system. So that kind of just wraps up the really brief presentation, just wanted to share with you some of the things we're doing as part of this sewer system management program, so you can have had a feel for what, what you were looking at. So, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you Steve. All right then, are any members of the public like to address this item?
I got these bad allergies and cold, I started to stay at home. Back in the old days, they had sewers behind your house, then it started from Clovis, and all these surrounding areas, all their stuff was coming out there on Jensen, after birth, rebirth hospital, doctors, field, farmers, 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 everything came out there. And from that geographic of what he showed us on this picture, I don't see how we can drink that recycled sewage water, and I don't see how we can put that stuff around your kids in the flower pots, and on their grass, to water it, to make God's work, work, that's not God's work, that's, we pay for bill, that's drinking, you pay for it, but it's coming out. So these people up there, I give it to capital improvement up there, they get some jobs done, but I wish they'd be working for the City of Fresno, that's the only problem. That money should be over here for City of Fresno, like that name said up there. Because all this stuff here, we had lines going all the way across, the line was busting, overload, he talking about San Francisco, it stinks so bad, one time I was walking down the street, you can smell that stuff everywhere, don't make sense. But, um, they need new lines, but now I see the guys got them in the center of the road, they got this big truck coming, put the line down, and they suck all that crap out and take it on Jensen, so we can recycle, put the sledge in this doggone thing, and put the water in this pipe to come back, to go back in the ground, to go back into the ocean, then we recycle it and drink it. Why we have, and then the Northern California, up in San Diego, LA, up in there, they bringing their stuff down here to Bakersfield, and we got all this stuff around in our gardens and stuff, I mean, in the flower pots and grass and stuff, and our kids gotta wall around in it, that's not there. And, and if I say up there, they talking about that, and they had environment, did a good study, and it's not safe. Swear to talking about everything safe, putting that water up there, take that water home to her house, she was over millions of gallons over, Bang was over millions of gallons of water, I read it in the paper, what about saving some yourself? But this guys up here, they wanna put new pipelines, and the state of California already talked about it, they had a discussion with somebody else, other than the City of Fresno, then he gave oral discussion down here, we can understand a lot better, and I think he did, and thank you very much. I think it's a damn good project, we should approve all these lines around here. I like cussing the Bible, cuz don't mean shit, the real Bible can understand.
Any other members of the public like to address this item? All right then, Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, just wanted to congratulate each and every one of you, and your teammates, for this type of thinking and innovation, and personally, I think you need to be rewarded, some extra days off or something, because, uh. Oops. Well, we'll work on that, I think, Bruce. But seriously, I, I think that's, it's nice to congratulate you, and have the acknowledgement here, but I, I really would like to see something better for those that are innovative, and that would encourage all of us, all of us are employees, and all of us to use that innovative thinking and implementation like you folks did. So it's, uh, it's outstanding, and, and thanks for making our city more efficient and a better place to live. Thank you so much.
All right then, is there a motion there? Motion to?
Motion to approve.
All right, and you have a second? Motion to approve in a second, the screen is clear, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Looking at Clint? All right then, motion passes seven zero. Thanks Steve.
Thank you.
All right, now we are down to the City Council section of our agenda, and there's Item 3A, ID 14-659, and that's actually my item, I'm sponsoring this item. What it simply is, and I'll just speak from up here at the dais, is simply a resolution of support for an opportunity to use money from Measure C, in, to use on trail systems and trail maintenance in our city. So, in the past, Measure C monies, it's been very obscure whether money can be used from Measure C for the maintenance of trails. And really, the maintenance of trails is where we run into trouble, we don't have any dollars for the maintenance of trails, so we don't get to add any new trails to the city. So what we are petitioning COG, Fresno Council of Governments, to do, is to draft policy and send it to the FCTA, and ask them to be able to use Measure C dollars for trail maintenance. Am I right so far, Bruce? And, and our city manager, Bruce Rudd, has sent, sent a letter asking for that policy to be made, and I wanna pass, I wanna have a resolution today that shows the COG and FCTA that we are supportive of using those monies for trails. I think the pilot program is a trail that would begin right over here, near Manchester, so that would be in District Seven, and Clint's out of the room right now, but if, if this is successful, these trails could be implemented all around the city. And it's really, one other thing that's a side benefit that I'm, it's worth mentioning is that, all of this is a result of a joint meeting that we had with the City of Clovis in the early spring, and trails was just one of the subject matters, and we began to talk about trails, we, we put some people to work in between the, the first meeting and the second meeting, which we just had about a month ago, and a lot was done, and at the second meeting a month ago, we got an update, and this is what we were told, that we're ready to move on some policy. So, the side, there is a second side benefit to this trails, is that, that we really did have a benefit of both the City of Fresno and the City of Clovis meeting together and openly discussing some issues. So hopefully, even more can come, come about with our talks with the City of Clovis and the County of Fresno. So, that was it for me, do I have any questions, or any thoughts on this from council, then I'll go out to the public.
If I could, Council President, just wanted to ask, the, the item before you today, the, the amendment to the Measure C trail program has already been reviewed by the Measure C Oversight Committee, the TC, the Technical Committee, the Policy Committee, and the COG Board, and the COG Board about a month ago unanimously supported the city's recommendation. So that will be going, this resolution is going to be, has already been approved by the COG, so this resolution supports the COG's actions, the City of Fresno's action, to the FCTA. So two down, one to go.
Two down, one to go. So COG, it's already moved through COG then, our letter, our, our resolution of support will join that as it moves over to FCTA, which has the final authority. All right then, Councilman Baines.
Thanks, Council President. I, I just wanna register my support for, for this action, and, and thank you for your leadership on this. I think that we, we all enjoy trails, we know that they're an added, added amenity to our city, and I think finding, you know, creative ways, because we know we don't have these types of dollars in our general fund per se, but for finding, you know, creative ways to be able to maintain them, I'm in full support of that.
All right, screen is clear, we are gonna go out to the public, so Barbara, if you wanna talk about trails?
I wanna talk about you, Mr. Brown, when you was little, coming in them bushes with them girls going around them trails, and this thing is not gonna look like no trail, this gonna look like Harvest Moon. I seen with some of the pictures, but when the problem came at years ago, like, I think about Bunker Hill, you know, we had a hard time getting to the top of that thing during the war, and then all these people, when they try to rush up there, they never made it, because they shoot them down before they get there. So that's what, at Willow Park, when that was going through back in those days, they was worried about people coming from the mountains, running down behind their house, and they not know who the hell they are, and everything, and this, where they can run all over town. It's not like we in a situation now, we can just walk and hold hands and talk, eat ice cream and cookies, whatever, on the side of the road, and the trail, you know what a trail look like when you're going fishing, but the way they got this piped up, it's gonna look like a mansion. And, and I'm glad that it's coming to your neighborhood, so you can be a model, and Bruce over there, if I know he got something to do with it, it's gonna be done right, so I'm not worried about this one here. But I wish he'd take over that department up there, but this would be a start for us down here in local value. It's nice to get out there in the summer, just walk around, talk, whip them down the trail site, like San Francisco, other different places, but we don't have them. But before this money run out from the federal government, we better put a halt on some of these unrealistic projects, like housing development, until we're sure that we getting some money from the federal government, because we can't stick our neck out, we're broke. And we just, we worked all these many years off of the, your pit, the employee's pension, we won $218 million, and then we worked all these many years off of their pension, and off our, what you call that, when they got all that money from my taxes, for their pensions and stuff, but it's time now, they're broke, so we gonna have to slack back on a lot of things that we're doing, but I wouldn't stop on the project that's in your area, because the area, it relaxes your brains, your mind, you get out the house, you can just get away with your kids, go inside, see, look at what God gave us, nature, and I think would be great. We need that. And plus, we get our, our breathing from the pollen, from all the trees, all of our auction stuff, it comes from what God gave us, like, let, now all these allergies in my eyes, dirt, dust, it don't make sense. Five police cars running them down my street every night, and more ragged ass car, they oughta get them off the road. That's in Mr. Baines' district, but I'm glad they out there, because those kids are having fun. So thank you very much, um, we need more trails, but they gotta- We need more trails, but they gotta have security, they gotta have lights, they gotta have seats and stuff like that, it just can't be some weeds right there in the little piece of sidewalk, cave, little dirt, asphalt, make something for them to look at like Woodward Park back there by that China, what you call that Japanese tea party back there? We can have some really nice for the city of Fresno at the rate that we're going, but we gotta sit together and get it done because it's not gonna last very long because I believe in that war over there gonna be over here pretty soon, they gonna tear up every damn thing, we ain't gonna need them but some holes to hide in, so thank you very much.
I think, any other members of the public like to address this item? All right then, and Barbara brought up a real good point, this is going to be a, a good multi-purpose trail with, with trees and grass and, and seats and so in a day where we're gonna end up discussing our general plan a little bit later today, all of this will end up counting as green space for our city, which is, will really help change our percentages in the city of Fresno, so that's another side benefit to putting in these trails. So I'm going to make the motion that we send a letter of support for this policy as it moves through FCTA and so I have a second, the screen is clear, all in favor, aye, all opposed, all right, that motion passes seven zero. And now we are on to unscheduled communication, so Barbara, if you'd like to take the microphone, it's unscheduled communication and that's going to wrap up this portion of our day.
Yes, I do, I do. On, on the chart of the city of Fresno incorporating eighteen eighty-five, twenty-nine-two-zero-one, incorporating eighteen eighty-five, twenty-nine-two-zero-one, it wasn't the development, the, the people up there, the resource people, development management, it wasn't them, it was the city of Fresno. But when I went to the meeting the other night and I seen our body, the attorney was down there, all of our staff was down there, the planning commission's supposed to have their own staff, they're supposed to have their own attorney, we not supposed to be coaching them and what I'm seeing there is a conflict of interest, all of that was illegal. Then when I see all these houses, they gonna put upscale houses in all these neighborhoods, we stayed in two up in the first place and Sal was here when Dan Rockwell's giving houses away for a dollar, code enforcement tearing up everything and getting ready for this moment. We not in Arkansas, we in California, the only state that wasn't ratified into the union like all the rest of them back in those days, if they want to know the truth about it, we still left out in the open, but we gotta do something at this meeting coming up and I don't think, the people are saying that they want more time just to read it because all those pages is too much and then why is the rush? And that it's not our project, even the builders and the only one I seen there was a semi, the guys, one of our guys up in the housing, guy worked for the Granville, whoever, with some papers what they want changed in the apartments, I don't think that's there, I think they all should have opportunity, all the people should have opportunity, it's not no rush on this here, we've been doing this for all these many years and another thing, with, that's a general plan update, is no such thing as a general plan update, it's gotta be a general plan approved. So that's what make me think that the city of Fresno has the one with the general plan approved and the people upstairs got the one for the general plan update like redevelopment, redevelopment agency, that's the city council, that's the city of Fresno. So I see some crooked shit going up up here, those people don't belong to us, we, I set a charter, don't call for them to change our general plan, to change no land use, change no, anything that's going on out here, now they come to Fresno, try to bring their money scales back in because they cut the prices too low. Well, that guy over there, they have a lot of fun, but they, they all upset because they don't know which way to go because they don't know politics, that's why people elect people because they don't know, like the guy on the planning commission, one ran for this seat, Mr. Bone, mayor, she pointed him and then got behind Bones, that guy over here, they put the people in place so when they want to vote, the money in the vote is there, like half of y'all was, y'all was put up here, somebody wanted you guys up here and they nominate you, put money on your card when you get ready to run for election, you ain't supposed to accept all that money, you supposed to do what the people say do, that's why I don't accept no money, that's why I never get up here. I'd rather be out here so I can run my mouth and let you guys know what going on because I admire George over there because he do print, write things that goes on around here and I'm, I'm coming to this meeting over there, I might get another parking check, but it don't make any difference, God take care of me. Bruce will pad, thank you so much, let's go, time to say, meeting's over.
All right. Well, she is correct, this part of our meeting is over and we are going to meet back at the exhibit hall of the convention center this evening at five o'clock and do a public, public commentary on the general plan and so we invite everybody to be there tonight at five o'clock and we'll see you then.